Like to welcome you and call to order the October 27th Port Arthur City Council Regular Meeting in pursuit to the governor's stay at home, stay at safe order. City Council, we will be conducting this meeting via Zoom this evening. The link was published on our website. It is on our agenda and we've given, provided us also a call in option for the public to listen to our meeting and participate. I would like to invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we are to the approval of our agenda this evening. There any modifications you'd like to see in tonight's agenda? And if not, would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Dina, a second by Councilmember Luca Reli to approve the agenda as it was presented this evening. Further discussion of this evening's agenda. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Have seen ayes and hands raised, any nays? Hearing none, the agenda has been approved. We are to our first citizen comment period. I see somebody named Sherry popping in, so Sherry, if you'd like to comment this evening, you're entitled to three minutes for, to talk about anything that's on this evening's agenda. And there's a second comment period at the end of the meeting. All right, well, we'll move on. We have a consent agenda that's been published. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, I believe. And any discussion of the consent items, there's only two. None, all in favor of approving the consent items, please state aye.
Aye.
Right, anyone opposed? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. We have a presentation. Steve Rice is here again this evening from Rice, Fergus Miller, and he's going to talk to us this evening about our site selection criteria. So I would like to turn this over to Steve, and I think Brandy's going to allow Steve to share his screen.
Thank you.
Okay, you should be able to now.
Does that look right?
Can you blow it up a little bit?
That's a full screen. Can you see that all right?
I can, I can.
Yeah, I can see it fine.
Me too.
Okay. Well, thanks, Council, for inviting me to share a little bit about site selection criteria for the CEC. I have all of them in draft form, ready to walk you through. As kind of stated here on the front, these are fairly typical considerations, the things that we end up talking about in public projects. Normally, a site is already selected, in this case, not, so we go through this special process. And there's a weighting factor. Sort of splitting the criteria into three categories, most important, important, and potentially negative. So I'll take you through, through these, and I think maybe the thing to do is to kind of just take you through them fairly quickly. There are nineteen overall, just a sentence or two, and then we can go back to the top and work our way back down and entertain any questions or comments that you have. This first page, first page of two pages lists ten criteria, ten of the nineteen, all of which are currently labeled as most important criteria. And so when members are scoring these criteria in the site selection process, they can award up to ten points depending on a, how well they think the selected site does one of these things, and whether they also agree that it's that important a criteria. So they have the opportunity to be editorial in their scoring. So the first one is program fit, and this probably seems obvious, obviously, we need a site that fits the program for the CEC, that is, the square footage for the event spaces and library and everything else. Second is design outcome, and right now, we're starting our site tests on three different sites, and it's interesting how different the outcomes are. And in theory, they have all the same spaces, but the design on each site is very different. Outdoor, the quality of outdoor space is different, and so we want a good outcome as well. Parking is important, and the way this reads is how well does the identified dedicated and/or shared parking support the building's needs in a way that fits with other parking needs downtown. Obviously, we want something that's, that's complimentary. Outdoor areas, it has been mentioned very heavily on the outreach comments that have come back. The quality of outdoor areas, covered outdoor areas adjacent to the building turn out to be what most people agree as the most important element of this building, which is interesting. So there's a factor about that. The CEC is proposed to the public facilities district as part of a master plan that also includes private development and commercial office space for Kitsap Bank. And obviously, as we test different sites, does the site continue to support and encourage other pieces in the master plan? Land use, how well does the CEC development fit land use shoreline restrictions without variances or complex land use actions? Recreation has been routinely mentioned and comes back in a lot of comments as well. How well does the site offer both passive and active water-dependent or water-related recreational opportunities that might be different from just simply having a waterfront pathway go by? Is the CEC visible on this site, and will people find it easily? Can you grade the site's accessibility via public transportation? So can everybody get there? Then something called forward progress, and I'd love some questions about this when the time comes. How well does the site allow for a CEC project to proceed on its own design and construction schedule without dependency on other stakeholders? So that's the first set of criteria, and then the second page, the final page, has five criteria listed as important and four listed as potentially negative. And so up to five points for any of these important criteria. Shoreline, how well does the site include an opportunity for shorelines mitigation and restoration? Obviously, that's an option on some of the sites, or at least one, and we think that's Other partners, how well does the site support the inclusion of added smaller partner users who could offer services and/or help manage or operate the CEC on a daily basis? Business support, how well does the site location provide a boost to establish downtown businesses or encourage the generation of new ones? SMP is the shoreline's master program, State of Washington's, is administered by the City of Port Arthur. Does the CEC on one of these sites take advantage of the opportunities provided in the SMP in a way that other types of projects may not be able to? Remember waterfront parcels, if you're looking at waterfront sites, allow water-dependent, water-related, or water enjoyment uses with certain setbacks where they do not generally allow uses that are not water-dependent, water-related, or water enjoyment uses. So that's nice to know. Meaning, it's nice to know that we're placing a project like this in a place that could take advantage of a shoreline setting as opposed to a different kind of use, which we may not be able to describe as water-dependent, water-related, or water enjoyment, such as an antique shop. And then potentially negative criteria where a scorer can assign up to ten negative points, so it takes away from a site's total. Geotechnical, do existing reports suggest that construction might involve steps and costs for geotechnical conditions beyond those anticipated and understood in 2019? So obviously, we understand that everything on the waterside of Bay Street is a fill condition, buildings have been standing there a long time. We understand that they will most likely be built on pilings, but is there anything else that's happening as we begin to investigate the sites that suggests that it might take more than we first imagined? And so, the thing that I can't find a better word for, so I just used bother, is there a different challenge or something else about the site that would require extra costs or extra time? A good example of this is if we built a CEC on site four, the current library would be forced to move to another location for more than a year, have relocation costs, perhaps rent, that kind of thing. Fatal flaw, is there some kind of environmental condition easements or an archaeological discovery or any other restriction that would make development uncertain moving forward? And then historical, does the site contain a historical structure that would require evaluation or mitigation? So what I tried to do was cover a lot of areas sort of equitably. From my perspective, from the perspectives of those who sit on the steering committee and some of the design team, we did reach out to our subconsultants, civil, structural, shorelines, engineers, our geotechnical consultant, our biologist, and our archaeologist to just see, you know, what was on their minds to create this draft list. So with that, I think, I'd love to, you know, go back here to the top, then we can do this in eighty order you want, and if you, you know, are fans of hand raising, I guess you can do that, and I can probably see them. Otherwise, there are too many of us, so if you'd like to just weigh in, maybe just identify your names, I can't see everybody on the screen all at once, and, and take your turn.
Hey, this is Beck Ashby.
Hi, Beck.
And I just had a couple of, I think, fairly easy questions. Are we going to consider in the slight, in the selection criteria, if the properties can be purchased fee simple or if they're going to need a lease? And what would a lease look like?
Yeah, that's a great question, and until recently, we had a criteria in here, I think it's the only one that's been taken out since we created the draft, about, you know, is the site attainable? Can we buy it? Can we buy it for a reasonable amount of money? Does it represent a reasonable value to the city for a project like this? And, you know, we realized that there's a lot wrapped up in that question, it is super important, but we didn't think at this point in time, it was probably possible to assign, you know, a scoring rubric to something like that. So we set it off to the side.
Okay, I have my, my one other question is, we talked in there about the site being compatible with the master plan, because that was part of the original project.
Yeah, right here.
Are we considering at all how the, the site selection will fit into the subarea plan that the city is doing for downtown? I don't know if that's important or not, I just wonder if it had been discussed.
It absolutely has, thank you, Beck, for the question, and Nick has offered us the opportunity in the site selection process that as we go through this, we can vest the site into the subarea planning process that you're undergoing right now.
And I would add that the, the master plan for downtown, with the exception of which site the community center is located on, is not changing between what we told the PFD, or what we showed the PFD when we applied for funding, and what we're adopt, what we're proposing to put in the final subarea plan document. So there's, there's really no change there, other than potentially that the 7-Eleven site isn't being considered for the community center, and we will move the community center to a different location once we choose it.
So Jay, I think you raised your hand.
I did, I think you may have covered it, but the, the ones that came out are, is it worth putting in anything about any of the sites regarding building construction for leads or environment, you know, the lead criteria or energy, such if you wanted to go solar or anything, or is that too, too much in the weeds at this point in time?
We did consider sustainability, and, and I think all of the sites that we're considering would be awesome candidates for a lead type of construction project. We didn't see that there was anything that would stand in the way of doing that. A lead project is not just building centric, it's also very site-centric, and the attributes of these sites are, are consistent and would all score well in a lead process, because you're attempting to build a public facility where you already have public infrastructure, public transportation, and they're all what I would call infill sites. So I think they would all score very well, and didn't seem to be a distinguishing factor that we should grade, but it would be a fine thing to add, and I think all the, the sites would score well. And if the council would like, that can be added.
I think they'll all, if they're all equal in that area, I don't know that it's, what's the distinction then, would be my two cents?
I wouldn't add it if they all scored, would be high scores, and thank you for that discussion.
You bet.
Other questions for Steve? Scott, go ahead. You're muted, Scott.
Remind me, in the previous presentation, did we talk about a scale of outdoor area that, that we are contemplating would be at least the minimum, minimum required for the CEC?
Yes, there isn't right now what I would call a, an absolute square footage number. I think it would vary pretty wildly from one site to another. I can tell you right now that Site Two, where Kitsap Bank's current headquarters and branch is, because of the DNR piece attached there, and assuming that the DNR lease can be redone, not for the building, but for the site work, that site offers some pretty amazing outdoor opportunity, and that's why we include this outdoor areas as our fourth criteria. When you move to the middle of town, it gets more of a challenge to create that immediate and adjacent outdoor space that isn't conflicted with other things going on. And then if you think about the Site Five, which is our option C, it's the non-waterside site where Kitsap Bank's parking lot is and the 640 Bay property. Kind of a different deal there entirely, where you're allowed to build to a higher height limit, and you create an entirely different set of views, and, yeah, but you're, you're across the street from the water, so the quality of the outdoor space would be very, very different from what we have on the waterside bay. So I think you, you call attention to something that is, is really, really important, and I think all of the sites will attempt to gain as much access to good outdoor space as possible, because we know it's critical to the quality of events that can be held there, the size of the events that can be held there, and the seasonality of events that can be held there. It's a big piece.
So I'm wondering if we ought to weight this just a little, or revise this just a little, so that the, so that it suggests that, not necessarily that bigger is better, but that since this is a key component to making the project a success, that the, those that offer larger areas would somehow get a bit of a bump on that.
Well, if we've got ten points, wouldn't one be at one end of the scale and the other be at the other end of the scale?
Well, and I would also argue that there's other things that I think would be equally as important, and I would hate to necessarily weigh one over the other. I mean, I would argue that availability or access to parking certainly is, would be important for the functionality of the facility. Obviously, some of those other criteria compliance with the master plan and those. So I would have a time figuring out which ones would be lesser, so that we could give others more, and which ones would be more.
And I'm not trying to diminish any of the others, but it seems like we have three sites that fit that criteria and a couple that don't. So that you could have, in theory, three of those sites that are weighted equally with outdoor areas, but really, there's one site perhaps that offers a much better opportunity for an outdoor area.
Agreed, but again, there might be another factor that would help distinguish between those three that I think would be equally as important when you look at the total project is all I'm suggesting.
Yeah, and the way I see it, this, this weights just that accessibility equally across the scale, whereas I think I've heard that outdoor area is an important part of this, as are some of the other pieces.
Yeah, that's my point, as are some of the other pieces, and that would be the
challenge of which ones should we add a little more weight to or leave them? I mean, they're all important, obviously, and they all have a, an impact on which one would be the best.
So I think maybe I misstated what I was, I was trying to say. I'm not suggesting that we add more weight to this particular criteria, but that the criteria be re-described a little bit.
Scott, do you think that perhaps, you know, when I think of outdoor space, I think of both, you know, how much do I have, but I also think about the quality of what I have. Would words like size and/or quality be the kinds of descriptors that you'd like to see buried in there or in some sort of a hypothetical comment, so that the scorer understands that he or she can look at it in more than one way?
Yes, because you might have a space that can offer 2,000 square feet of that, and it can be attractive and connected, but you might have another space that offers 15,000 square feet, and maybe that's what we would really like more. So yes, I support those characteristics. And then I have another, another question.
You're muted again, Scott.
Do all the sites have historic buildings on them? And, and if, and what does that mean in terms of how we treat those?
Yeah, that was, Fred, Steve.
Steve isn't exactly the authority on this at the moment. Lori Cook and, and the mayor have delved into this, and it's a really interesting question, and it came up, I know we touched on this last week. It came up in the archaeological report, and it, it says that a building that's over either fifty or sixty years old, from an archaeological standpoint, is considered a historic building, even though I think we took it all to mean, well, it either needs to be on some kind of a register or not, and if it is on a register, then we understand it as a recognized and cataloged historic building, and that could be on a city register, it could be on a county register, it could be on a state register, it could be on a national register. I don't believe any of the buildings that we're talking about are on any registers, but there does, there is a funding component of this, and would you like to kind of clarify that better than I can?
Yeah, so when Lori and I talked about that, that the threshold is fifty years, and it only affects us, so the buildings need to be evaluated, and if they're evaluating and found to be significantly historic in nature, then it doesn't mean that we can't build on that site, that could be mitigation required, and this is only in the realm of federal and state funding. So for pursuing grants, which we likely are, it needs to be part of our criteria, it could affect the decisions. So the only site that doesn't have one is the Kitsap Bank site, it's, it's outside of that fifty-year window, our library building is more than fifty years old, I can assure you, it's not historic, but we still have an additional step to do to, in, in this criteria, otherwise, we're not eligible, we wouldn't be eligible for the, some of the grants we, we tend want to pursue.
So we might decide, a scorer might decide that if there's a building on the site that is older than fifty years, he or she might look at this and say, well, it's potentially negative, but is it a serious deal? Is it a minus ten, or is it not a serious deal? And that may have something to do with the cost and time involved of doing the evaluation. It could also be, I think, seen as a positive thing if, if it helps for grant funding.
And I have a question, I don't know if you can answer it, Rob, or not, but if a building has been substantially remodeled during that fifty-year period, is it still considered historic, or would that be evaluated when you do the building evaluation?
Yeah, I can't answer that without, I think it's part of that evaluation process, John. I think more than, I don't think any of these buildings will be, meet that criteria, it's just another step and an evaluation and, and time that we have to devote to that, to a process.
Okay.
I don't think any of them are a deal killer, it's just, we need to recognize it's, it's time and money to do these additional steps if we pick those sites.
Thank you.
You bet.
Other questions? Are we comfortable with what we're seeing here? I think we've got a couple little tweaks that I've heard from you.
Yep.
And I know you're, Fred, go ahead.
I like the forward progress point, I actually think of it more as autonomy or independent development, because we hear that this project is so intertwined with some of the other stakeholders, so I'm glad that that element is in there.
The, the forward progress point, I think is really interesting, over the years doing numerous projects for what I would call numerous projects for what I would call joint users. It creates an interesting dynamic between the users and if there's fundraising involved, they both have to, you know, be making progress at the same time or one slows the other down. And you can imagine, we already have, you know, a city and a library who are used to working together. The library has a foundation, you know, they've done this before. The more complex you make the project, the more people are playing into the same built facility. Just the more complex it gets. It doesn't mean that it can't be done. But more things have to really line up for it to go well.
So Steve, I think the next logical question is when is this? I know this step is coming soon. Is it next week? Is it a couple of weeks out? When are we gonna convene this and and do this process?
I don't know if I know the answer to that. You are right that it is pretty soon. And, you know, we've been working with the the steering committee. I'll just remind the council, the steering committee officially is Mayor Rob and Nick Kerry attends those. Jill Jean from the library. And John Morrissey attends, I guess we would consider him an ad hoc member, I'm not sure. The representative for the city on the Kitsap Public Facilities District. We also have been talking about the addition of a couple of more scores who could potentially have a stake in the building and not getting the group too large. It would not include anyone who holds property ownership. Obviously, to avoid a conflict of interest. And the design team will not be voting. The design team does the work, the design team sets the criteria with your blessing and would walk everyone through the criteria in much the same way that I did tonight, answer all the questions. But the design team would not score. The design team would certainly advise on what it thinks, but it would not be a scorer officially.
So if we can, I I'm probably looking for a couple of council members and I'm not looking to do that at this moment in time. But probably when I get to my mayor's report, I'll we'll talk about that a little bit more. I don't want to hold Steve up in his time while as we debate that issue. But probably looking for a couple of you and then and an alternate. Because this is something we're likely doing during the daytime and some of you have work schedules that we can't always accommodate. So but we'll come back to that particular piece and the composition of the committee a little later this evening. I don't need, I just don't want to hold Steve up in and with that. So other questions for Steve related to the criteria before we let him take off for the evening? Okay, thank you, Steve, for your time this evening.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for your interest in this. Really appreciate it. Okay, good night. I'll stop share. Okay, bye bye.
Okay, we are to our next order of business, which is the a hearing on the property tax levy and revenue sources and the current expense budget for 21 and 22, satisfying the requirements RCW 8455120. And this is Mr. Crocker.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Thank you. The city legislative body is required to hold a revenue sources, public hearing on current expense budget revenue sources for the coming year, including consideration of possible increases in property tax revenue for RCWR 8455120. The hearing is required before the legislative body votes on a private tax levy for the upcoming year. The deadline for setting the levy for property tax collections for 2020 is November 30th, 2020. This hearing is part of the public process that leads to the adoption of an ordinance setting the property tax levy, which is then forwarded to the Kitsap County Assessor along with the levy certification in order to set the property tax levy for collection in the 2021 tax year. The hearing will include a presentation of the revenue sources and estimates for 2122. The hearing relates to the setting of the 21 levy of property tax collections in the first year of our 2122 biennial period. Staff would recommend that we open and conduct the public hearing.
Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the property tax levy and the current expense budget for 21 and 22?
And I guess a point of clarification for the clerk's office. We did provide a revenue sources presentation at the study session last week. Is it appropriate to conduct the revenue presentation again as a part of this public hearing to go forward? If so, I'm prepared to do so and we can take the next ten minutes to walk through that presentation.
Council desire to go through that presentation a second time or what we did last week sufficient?
If we have public watching, it would probably be appropriate.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
Okay, go ahead.
With that, let me see. Oh, I can share. Great. So this is the same presentation that we walked through at the study session for those in the public, you know, two opportunities to review. So this will be the revenue sources presentation, which will lead to our property tax hearing later this evening. As required by RCW 8455120, we are required to hold this public hearing on the revenue sources for the general fund in order to set the property tax levy for 2021. Again, we are focusing on the current expense fund or general fund for tonight's discussion for the purposes of the revenue. Before use the proposed biennial budget for tax revenue only. This amounts to approximately $20 million 855 for the two year period. In this slide, we identify three main taxing categories. Sales tax at approximately $10.575 million, representing the largest taxing source. Property tax at $6.110 million, representing the second largest taxing source. And finally, we lump all our other taxes together at the $4.173 million. We provide greater detail on the three main taxing categories budgeted. We identify how much we have allocated by fiscal year and the percentage of the overall tax source each represents. Again, the sales tax is the largest taxing source, representing nearly 50% of our biennial budget. Tax revenue, property tax, the second largest, representing about 30%. Finally, other taxing sources making up the remaining 20%. Now the taxing sources, again, further identify the three primary electric tax, the telephone tax and utility tax, representing 14% of the overall 20%. A point of discussion in our last presentation was the telephone tax that is a declining revenue source. We have observed that over the last four years now and the question had been posed is, does that include cell phone tax collections? And I have confirmed that it does from our last meeting. So I did want to follow up on that question specifically. We complete the biennial revenue picture by adding all sources of funding. Again, this is the general fund, which is the current expense fund as well as street fund revenue sources. The other revenue sources identified in the smaller pie chart with a total of anticipated revenue of $4.066 million. The top three categories of the other revenue sources are the intergovernmental at $1.5 million. And this represents primarily federal and state grant revenue, along with our motor vehicle fuel tax for the street capital, street funds. Again, with more vehicle fuels tax, we are seeing decline in the current fiscal year. Charges for goods and services are at approximately $778,800. These are primarily planning and court fees. And then lastly, rounding off with license permits at $963,500, primarily for business licenses and building permits. We take a closer look on this slide at the 2019 2020 budget compared to our 2122. You'll notice in the tax revenue, we are budgeting an increase of approximately 2%. Sales tax is approximately 4.24%. Property tax is 6.43%. And other taxes is approximately 36.5% of the budget. Focusing on our other revenue category, a point of highlights is again, intergovernmental intergovernmental fund at about 50% of that category, primarily due to the PFD grant funds for the community center effort. License permits is budgeted to increase by about 19%. Charges for services are budgeted to decrease by 12%. Again, what we are observing is that adult probation charges are down, many court fees are down. We attribute a lot of this to COVID and the shutdown of public system, how we're managing and and operating differently. And that's a theme in a lot of these categories that we do see a decline in the budget. Fines and fortunes are also budgeted to decrease by 8%. These include traffic infraction penalties, other criminal, other criminal traffic as well as public defense revenues. Again, important to note that overall for the 2122 biennial budget, when we review our actual history and activities, we're projecting to be about 4% higher in revenues. This year, under state law, no local government may increase its property tax levy more than 1% in a given year. And local governments with a population of $10,000, $10,000 or more are limited to lesser of the rate of inflation or if inflation falls below low 1%, a jurisdiction may adopt a resolution of substantial need, allowing it to increase the levy up to the full 1%. This means that for the state to levy the full percent, it will need to take a second substantial need ordinance setting the levy limit above the IPD. And the IPD has come to 0.62%. If the governing board has four members or less, ordinance must be approved by two thirds of the board. If the board has more than four members, a majority plus one vote is required. The city has identified that we do have a substantial need and you will see that later this evening. In particularly, as we increase our investments in our street preservation program, at the same time as we're observing more vehicle fuel tax revenues decline. This table provides historic property tax data in the proposed 2021 tax levy to be adopted later this evening. For 2021, we are proposing a property tax levy of $3.041 million. And it's important to remember that Washington State has the most complex property tax methodology nationwide. Washington State has a budget based system of property taxation, which means that as part of the budget process, the city establishes the amount of property tax revenue needed to fund the budget. That amount needed to fund the budget is called the levy. And the city establishes the levy amount and the county will calculate the levy rate required to raise that amount of revenue using assessed value and other levies established by other districts. The city will certify to the county by November 30th. And for again, for 2021, we have identified 3.041 million levy needed. The slide shows actual property tax collections over time. As you can see, we have seen some growth in property tax revenue collections. However, property tax collections in 2018 did not grow significantly. Again, due to the fire district's levy lid as well as the library district's lid lift. And as we've discussed in previous meetings, you know, you'll notice the drop after 2011 in which the city was collecting $2.62 million property tax levy. However, in 2010, the city agreed to pay $35,000 to library. After 2010 and 2011, the city agreed to pay $40,000 to library as well as the as well as the previous years. The city had wanted to have a library downtown, thus that is the reason why we contributed in those prior periods. Then in 2012, voters elected to become part of the library district. Thus, the tax revenue went down and directly to the library district fund those and the city would no longer collect those monies. This slide compares 2020 and 2021 and breaks down the levy amount. The 2.962 million was the final levy amount in 2020. 2021, we can collect an additional $9,629. By that point, we have hit our full 1% levy. Again, you see the increase is actually not a full 1% because of our cap limitations. It's only actually a 0.3932% increase. After that, we factor in new construction as well as no new annexations are planned. We have $10,000 estimated for state utilities. And at this time, it's just a place where, as we don't know, the state utilities comes in late November. And then lastly, we are required to by state statute to add in our refunds. This $15,492 represents monies that were paid out to property owners after going through the dispute process. We are required to levy that refund amount and share amongst all our taxpayers, bringing an estimate of levy of $3,051,000. Moving on to retail sales and use tax, the state portrait receives 0.84% of sales tax. Oops, excuse me. In this chart, we see that 2020 shows we are on track through three quarters. We've collected roughly 82% of what we estimated. Experienced solid growth in actual sales tax revenue since 2015. And again, we have discussed this with the finance committee regarding their appetite for sales tax revenue risk and have landed with our value of $5,235 million for 2021 and $5,340 million for 2022. The big concern again, as always, relates to economy and the impact of COVID for our next fiscal years. When comparing the first three quarters of 2019 against the three quarters of 2020, we show a growth rate of approximately 6.16%. The growth rate is up slightly from the prior year when we measure the same year over year. Again, for the 2122 biennial budget, we're budgeting a total growth rate of 4.24%. With this approach, we are budgeting our upside potential while hopefully limiting our downside risk for this revenue source. We recognize that people observe information differently, so we like to display the sales tax history on the graph for those visual learners. Again, the bar charts show solid sales tax growth and reflects the variance in collections by year and month. With that, that concludes the presentation on the revenue sources hearing and I turn back over to the mayor for public comment.
And we have opened the public hearing and we've now given the presentation. And is there anyone wishing to comment on the revenue hearing or revenue information that we just received? Councilor Clausen?
Just a quick question. I want to make sure I heard you correctly, Don. Did you indicate that in the telephone line item that does include cell phone bills?
Correct, it does.
And you are projecting a decline in that revenue between 21 and 22? Is there? I certainly understand it if it was landlines, but with cell phones being the way they are.
Yeah, we 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 dived into the detail of the data and it was really hard to analyze what is going on in that telephone tax because you see lots of changes in that industry. It was kind of interesting how companies change and would go bankrupt and the new company would come into play, whether we sell or landline. So it was hard to, I guess, predict and project what actually is occurring that's causing the decrease in revenues. But we do see the trend over the last four years and so we kind of trend lined it for the next two years. Ideally, we would be off in telephone tax revenue would at some point level off right about where we're budgeted.
Thank you.
And I would wonder, you know, we've got people moving to our area and, you know, just you don't necessarily get a 360 area code anymore. And with all the, you know, electronic payments, it could be people living in our community that that tax is going to where they got their cell phone. It could be people living in our community that that tax is going to where they got their cell phone at potentially. And there's really no way for us to monitor or track that. But it's purely speculation on my part. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing and any other questions for? Mr. Crocker about the revenues before we jump into our business items. Okay, hearing none, well, we'll jump into our business items, which first of of is. Item 7A adoption of an ordinance setting the amount of property tax to be levied for the year 2021 pursuant to RCW 8455120.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, business item 7A is the adoption of an ordinance setting the amount of our property tax levy. You heard already this evening on October 27th, we held a public hearing on the revenue sources for the current expense general fund budget. The hearing included a presentation and and a discussion on the property tax considered for the collection in 2021. In the Stafford part, we have illustrated a table of the 20 and 21 property tax levy amounts. State law establishes the maximum levy rates for these various types of taxing districts, state, county, cities, towns, fire districts, libraries. Total city of Port Orchard 2021 proxy levy is estimated at 3,051,366. Based upon an estimated 1.3535 per thousand of current total assessed valuation of. 2 million, 2 billion, 235,542,403. A 2021 amount estimated is estimated until the final levy calculation is completed by the Kitsap County Assessor. Pursuant to RCW 8455120, the city council is required to adopt a separate ordinance. Specifically authorizing an increase in the regular property tax levy in both dollar terms and percentage. Staff and city council finance committee have reviewed this and would recommend approval of the property tax ordinance.
Councilmember Ashby.
There, I moved to adopt an ordinance setting the 2021 property tax. And the amount of the property taxes to be raised for the budget year of 2021.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ashby and a second by Councilmember Clausen to approve the property tax levy. Are there questions or for Mr. Crocker on this item? Seen heads shaking no, so I will call for the vote then, all in favor of approving this measure, please state aye. And is there anyone not in favor? Say nay. Hearing none, the ordinance to set the property tax levy has been set or approved. Where I into item 7B adoption of a substantial needs ordinance for property taxes to be levied in the year. 2021 pursuant to RCW 84550101, and this is also Mr. Crocker.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, we have discussed the substantial need ordinance and the reasons for that. And the staff report really illustrates and describes Washington State's parameters. In Washington State, the IPD or implicit price deflator index for personal consumption expenditure affects how property tax rate setting for local governments. The IPD for personal consumption expenditure is a figure used to measure inflation. And it can impact how much property tax revenue jurisdiction can collect in any year. Because IBD was 0.602%. It requires additional substantial need ordinance in order for the district, for the city to levy its full 1%. If the, due to the added costs required to meet the levels of service expected in the areas of public safety. Road repair and transportation, parks and recreation and other city services for the year of 2021. There's a substantial need for the state to set the levy limit at the full 101%. By this ordinance, the city council would find a substantial need to set the limit at the full 101% for 2021. Staff would recommend adoption of the substantial need ordinance.
Councilmember Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance finding the substantial need to increase property tax levy by 1%. And to set the levy limit at 101% to ensure adequate funding for city services in calendar year 2021.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Is there, are there any questions for Mr. Crocker on this matter? None, all in favor of proving the substantial needs ordinance for property taxes, please say aye. Okay, is there anyone opposed? I see none, so that this motion passes unanimously. We are on to 7C adoption of an ordinance approving the 2020 Port Orchard Municipal Code. Title 20 Unified Development Code Housekeeping Amendments, Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you. DCD staff continually tracks errors, inconsistencies and outdated references and omissions in title 20 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. The Unified Land Use and Development Code and gathers these into one corrections ordinance each year, generally known as the annual title 20 housekeeping ordinance. The, the proposed corrections to title 20 for 20 to title 24 2020 have been prepared for city council review. The ordinance is provided in clean format and an explanatory document is provided that lists each list each correction in numerical order. In strike through and underline format with explanations at the head of each change. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed housekeeping ordinance on October 6, 2020. And voted to recommend that the city council approve the ordinance. The land use committee reviewed the ordinance on October 7, 2020 and directed staff to bring the ordinance for full council review and adoption. And I believe that we reviewed this ordinance at the work study last week with the full council as well. And so I did provide an explanation of the changes that are provided, but real quickly. The, the changes are all pretty minor. There's a deadline that was due a half an hour after our office closes that we're fixing. There were a couple of permits that were mistyped in the permit table. They were type two or type one permits respectively that were listed as a different type in another section of code. We've corrected a few titles of sections, just the text of the title itself. We've deleted some extra text in a few locations, it was. Had randomly been left in the code and was not deleted in the final edits. We deleted a, an extra footnote that was. No longer had a reference within a particular table of the critical areas code. And then there were a few graphics where the graphic conflicted with the text and we had to make corrections to the graphic to match what was in text. So there are a handful of other minor corrections, but those are the types of amendments that are included in the ordinance. So the staff recommendation is that you vote to approve an ordinance adopting minor corrections to title 20.
Councilor Lucarelli.
I moved to approve an ordinance adopting minor corrections, clarifications and updates to title 20 Port Orchard Municipal Code.
Motion by Councilmember Lucarelli and a second by Councilmember Deener. Any questions on Mr. Bond related to these changes? We covered it pretty thoroughly last week's work study. As we walk through the documents, so. All right, with that, you'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance approving the 2020 municipal code unified development. Housekeeping amendments, all in favor, please say aye. And is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion for the housekeeping amendments is approved. We are to 7D approval of an interlocal agreement with South Kitsap School District for a school resource officer program. Chief Brown.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Mayor. So this is an updated interlocal agreement. Between the city of Port Orchard and the South Kitsap School District to maintain the school resource officer program for the 2020, 2021 school year. School district is currently on a remote learning plan and has requested the school resource officer remain dedicated to the school for 20 hours per week. When the school district goes to a hybrid or full-time session, the school resource officer will be dedicated to the school for 40 hours per week. This ILA covers continued service to the South Kitsap School District. Staff recommends the council approve the ILA between the South Kitsap School District and the city of Port Orchard for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Councilmember Rose Pepe.
Mayor, I moved to authorize the mayor to sign. The ILA between the South Kitsap School District and the city of Port Orchard for the 2020, 2021 school year.
A second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe and a second by Councilmember Ashby to. For the interlocal agreement between the school district and the city. Questions from Chief Brown regarding this matter, I think it was pretty self-explanatory, they only need us part-time until they resume school activity.
Chief, a quick question, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion throughout the nation about SROs. Did any changes on dress or? Actions to be taken come up during your discussion with the school district?
No, we actually had a fairly solid plan with them previously and a fairly solid contract. Especially with the superintendent Tim Winter who started about the same time I did. We both very much believe in having a school resource officer in the schools, but that they need to be there as a. A positive influence and it's more about relationship building, we are absolutely not involved in any discipline. That is a school issue, we are there again to build relationships and. Help, help our community to move forward and have positive interactions with the police. We're not there to worry about truancy or kids talking back or anything like that, so.
Just a quick comment, you're correct, chief, I was just wondering if there's any changes in my previous life, I can't tell you how. Great the support was from the police department and the SRO supporting that.
Yeah, we have a great one this year, so I'm looking forward to great things from her.
Councilmember Clausen, you had a question?
Yeah, just a question, when I reviewed this and looked at the dollar amount that the school district is contributing. Obviously, that's an officer that's dedicated to the school for nine months out of the year. We get the benefit of that officer the remainder of the year, so. I'm assuming that's why the amount that the school is paying is less than what an officer makes annually.
Yes, it's prorated on that nine months and then cut in half again since they're there four hours a day, five days a week.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, due to our recruitment challenges. We've been able to utilize that officer for our needs. Any other questions for the chief? All right, you'd be voting on the approval of an interlocal agreement with South Kitsap School District for the school resource officer program. All in favor, please say aye. Is there anyone opposed, please say nay. All right, the motion carries. We are to 7E approval of a memorandum of understanding with the police guild representatives patrol. Regarding starting pay of lateral officer applicants.
Hopefully this will help in our recruitment.
Good segue, so Debbie Long, our HR coordinator is here with us this evening and is going to talk about this matter.
All right, good evening and we hope so as well, Councilmember Clausen. The police department has several current vacancies for patrol officer and there's a large number of law enforcement officers. Looking to make lateral moves to agencies such as the city of Port Orchard's Police Department. When recruiting lateral applicants, the city must be competitive in salary and benefits. The current collective bargaining agreement with the patrol officers does not address placement on the wage scale for experienced officers. So the memorandum of understanding that you were provided separately from the packet. Allows the department to place lateral candidates on the pay scale commiserate with their years of experience. So the staff is recommending that the council authorize the memorandum of understanding with the patrol guild. To address language related to placement on the pay scale for lateral candidates.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the police guild. Representing patrol officers to revise the language in article 8.1 of the bargaining agreement relating to starting pay.
Motion by Councilmember Deener, second by Councilmember Clausen. Correct me if I'm wrong, chief, this is a, we've got three very good laterals to potentially fill three of our four positions. That we've had open for a significant amount of time. And this is a much needed tool to attract that, that talent from, from other cities that are. Not in the same situation that we're in with positive revenues.
Correct, we do have another series of interviews this week. And this makes us much more competitive, so I appreciate the council's support in this.
So Councilmember Deener.
I, I just want to offer that I think it's a standard tool in terms of placing somebody. In a salary range that's commensurate with their experience, so I think we're doing the absolute right thing here.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate your support. Okay, all right, any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, you'll be voting on the approval of a memorandum of understanding with the police guild representing patrol officers. Related to starting pay of lateral applicants, all in favor, please say aye. One opposed. Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to our last business item, which is the approval of the October 13th, 2020 council meeting minutes. And I should go, there's intentions happening here.
Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the council meeting minutes of October 13th.
Motion by Councilmember Clausen, second by Councilmember Lucarelli to approve the council meeting minutes of October 13th. Any discussion of these minutes or corrections to be noted? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the council meeting minutes of October 13th, please say aye. Anyone opposed? And I believe I have one abstention, which would be Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay, and that concludes our business, I did hear from Councilmember Kachardi and something came up. That prevented him from being here tonight. How do we want, do we want to excuse him at a future meeting, how? Or do we want to do that, the, can we do this now since we've already set our agenda? Would you?
Well, I think we could excuse him now and I would move that we approve the excusal for Councilmember Kachardi.
Second.
A motion to by Councilmember Clausen, second by Councilmember Deener to excuse Councilmember Kachardi for personal reasons this evening. So any further discussion of them? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, he has, Councilmember Kachardi has been excused. Mr. Dorsey, I hear some people went swimming in our reservoirs and you might have a video for us.
We do, and Jackie Brown, Jackie Brown is going to lead us through that. 5,000, 5,000 hours of fascinating video down to seven minutes and 24 seconds.
All right, here we go, is there popcorn?
Hey.
Do we need to hold our breath?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thanks for giving me this opportunity. So the city has a total of nine potable water storage vessels and this video is a representative sample of the recent cleaning project. Each tank is identified in the section and that begins that in that section that it begins, so let me start the video. I've put the sizes of the, of the tanks on there too, so you'd have an idea. The equipment is a trailer with the control room and communication equipment and the diver is in a full suit. Like a dry suit with a hard hat and cameras on the helmet.
Jackie, can you, can you turn down the volume on the video?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that, Council. So as I was saying, I was describing the equipment that they use. So the diver is sprayed down with a chlorine solution before they enter the tank and we don't, the tank is completely full. Or it's at whatever state it is when it's time for them to go into that particular reservoir, that particular tank. And notice the dark nature, now this. Notice the dark nature of the fine silt that settled out of the water. So this is the 580 that we're going to be eventually turning over to the city of Bremerton. You can see there's much less silt in this one, each well seems to have its own characteristics as far as how much. Settles out of the water, this is just naturally occurring. Now, this, these tanks were last cleaned about five years ago. Now, this, these tanks were last cleaned about five years ago. So this has taken five years to accumulate. That's the standard cycle that's recommended by American Water Works Association as a five-year cycle for cleaning tanks.
Jackie, what is this sediment? You're probably going to tell us.
No, it's just, it's just naturally occurring. It's just fine particles of silt that get pumped out with the water, and then as the water sits in the tank, it settles out.
It has slight concentrations of iron manganese, or, you know, it's just natural occurring elements in the water.
You can see how fine it is by, this is just a vacuum cleaner that the guy's using here, the diver's using, and you can see how fine it is by, he has to move very, very, very slowly to keep it from just going back into solution. And you can see it floating around if he moves quickly at all.
And if any of you are skilled, you know how absolutely difficult it is to set your B C up to be buoyant neutral so that you're, you're not kicking and stirring things up. So this is definitely a skill to move around the tank without stirring everything up.
Must be a pretty slow descent to do it that well.
So Mark, do we test the silt after each cleaning?
No.
Dispose of it.
I'm sorry, yeah, no, we don't test it because the concentration of chlorine in this water is at least 0.2 milligrams per liter. So we know there is enough bacterial, bacteriological safety to have the silt in there. The silt is already saturated with chlorine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are they required to film every vacuuming?
No, this is something that you can put in your request for proposals. Some do show you, will provide videos of 100%, some give you representative as this company did, and they also do a report at the end for you. Now, this 60,000 gallon tank is actually one of the two concrete tanks that's across, that is at the well field at Quormick. You can see there's hardly any silt in that, because the water isn't in there long enough for it to settle out.
And this is also a distilling basin, so it's different from a reservoir in the sense that this is a smaller tank, and like Jackie said, the water's more in and out. We're mainly removing hydrogen sulfide through air volatilization. This, this tank isn't used for fire standby storage or anything like that.
No, no. I didn't give you videos of every single tank either, because it gets kind of boring sitting there watching them for a while.
And this was hours and hours and hours of video that Jackie did go through and was able to whittle it down to this seven minutes.
I left this piece in so that you could see some of their equipment and see, you know, what they're working with. They've got these big lines. Now, next, we're going to flip over to wells six and seven. This is, the well for, well seven is at where Port Orchard Boulevard, right near where Port Orchard Boulevard meets Bay Street. So well seven and well six, which you'll see in a few minutes, are both artesian wells. And you can see the difference in the settlement that's on the floor. This is, this is like a fine sand. It's not the dark color that you take out of a ground, so this is what we get from the artesians. And in some places, this was nearly a foot thick. So we now know through this, through this cleaning, we now know that we need to clean the well six and well seven settling and treatment basins probably on a three-year cycle rather than five. In fact, it was so thick that he had to take the head off his vacuum cleaner. The other thing that they provide us when they do a cleaning is an inspection report, so they inspect all of the metal, like the ladder going in and all the attachments and the roof and everything, so we know if we are starting to develop a problem. Luckily, Port Orchard's water is not very corrosive.
How long did it take to clean that tank by just using the end of the hose?
Well, they didn't use the end of the hose for the whole thing. They just used it to, and the same with this one, they just used it to get the majority down far enough so that they could use it. And I think they were in that tank for a day and a half, and they were in this one for a full day, but it was a half a day, one day and a half a day another, because when they were doing this, it stirred the sediment up so much they couldn't see it, and they had to move on to something else. And this is the well six that's going to go away when we connect up well 13. This is Maple Street that's up behind Kentucky Fried Chicken.
It's a change order that you approved for additional silt removal.
Yes.
And these are more just healing basins.
They didn't know how deep this was going to be. We had no idea. And that's about it. So does anybody have any questions for me? That's why I didn't let you hear the, that's why I didn't include any of the inspections, because the video, I mean, the audio quality is hard to understand and is very noisy, so.
So are we submitting it for an Academy Award next year?
I don't think it would really be eligible, unfortunately.
Submit it.
Thank you. That's interesting.
Yes, it's wonderful.
It was really fun to learn how to play with that video software too, I'll tell you.
Yeah, so those are the, those are the sorts of things, you know. It isn't just fixing fire hydrants and water main leaks, it's basins and painting tanks and changing out valves and operating valves and hydrants, and, you know, there's a lot to maintain in the water system and the sewer system as far as just pure, you know, people hours.
All right, thank you, Jackie and Mark. Good night. To our committee reports, and the first, the finance committee, I think the report's probably that we're meeting all day tomorrow to meet with all of the directors. There are two dates that are kind of placeholders, just depending on how the meeting goes tomorrow, whether we need to meet again, and the first is November 10th, and Noah sent that one out already. And the second one is November 24th, and those are potential finance committee dates, depending on how our body of work goes tomorrow, and whether we need to meet more.
Mayor's the 10th still on there? I thought that was a conflict.
It is, but we'll make it work if we have to, and Noah's, it just depends on if we get our work done tomorrow or not. That's the, that's the driver, so we might, we might need to meet the 10th.
And could you refresh, and I believe the second option would have been the 23rd?
Twenty. Yeah. It's the Monday, whatever the Monday.
Right, because the 24th is transportation.
Yeah, it's, no, it's the Monday. You're correct. Thanks for correcting me. Yep, it's Monday, the 23rd. And both of those would be at five o'clock, depending on, or four, four or five o'clock, we'll circle back to you. Economic Development, Tourism met yesterday, I believe, or was it this morning? The week's been a blur. You met, I know that, and yesterday, it appears. And Councilmember Ashby, do you have a report?
Well, why don't I have Councilmember Tang?
Okay.
Are you right, can you do that, Fred?
I have weak internet, but I can try until you can't hear me. There were basically four items that we did go through, through the regular business community discussion. We skipped the events center recap because we had a work study. There was a brief update on the downtown county campus subarea plan. There isn't much to see yet, but that's in progress, if I remember correctly. Nick, correct me if I'm incorrect. We then had a discussion of the use of public space during COVID-19. And this was a, I don't recall if we made any conclusions on this, but
and I
It was something that raised. Please go ahead, yeah.
So, and I've circled back, a business owner that wanted to use that Frederick Street, who couldn't, she was sick that day and couldn't make the meeting yesterday, so her intent is occasional use, and I know we have a concern with the gifting of public funds, and Charlie's working on finding a path forward for me in that aspect. She, we, her and I discussed whether they could put the signs up and they were comfortable with that, but Public Works really isn't comfortable with that, and we would prefer to do that activity ourselves for liability reasons, so. So we need to find, you know, this COVID, this COVID exception. We're not looking to do this in perpetuity, but we want to be able to use the public right of way for the enjoyment of the public to utilize in, well, the merchants use this as a additional retail space, because they're, they're being constrained with occupancy, their occupancy loads in their buildings, so. So if they, for us to attract any, many people downtown, you know, they start to run into the maximum, they reduce, with their reduced occupancy in their buildings, it's problematic, so. I don't have the complete solution yet, but Charlie and I have talked about it yesterday, and maybe she can talk to it in her report, or later in the week, her and I will talk more about it, so. I wish I had it solved, but I'm still working on the issue.
So, okay, there is a discussion of the Shoreline Master Program update and the Port Orchard code revisions regarding sea level rise, and the discussion involved how this might potentially affect future developments for coastal development, and how it's, most of downtown is in this area, so several people may have received letters regarding the Shoreline Master Plan that's being developed. And lastly, we got a very interesting sheet of the monthly permit applications, which is always impressive to hear. DCD is, of course, very busy. It sounds like there's 100 homes year-to-date, 10 more of them here, and several multifamily developments, and there haven't been any since 2017. And that was it.
Okay. Fred, you're going to have to get your own internet and quit pirating mine from across the street, and you have more.
I'll use my phone.
Ah, okay. All right, so Utility Committee, have you guys met since our last council?
Yes, we actually met on October 20th. We talked about the water system plan for 2020 through 2030. It's an update. It will be on our January 2021 work study. And the second item, the Stormwater Program Status Report, will be next month at our work study, so you'll all be getting caught up on both of these and within several months. Our next meeting is November 17th.
Okay. So, thank you for your report. Land use?
We meet November 4th at 4:30.
All right, and Transportation met tonight?
We did, we did. We met tonight, and I'm just going to give a brief recap of the meeting. I don't have the agenda up. We did get an overview of the various preservation methods, so that at least I understand them now, the cracked ceiling and filling potholes and the melon fill and the chip seal. I kind of understand now all of the differences there and the overlays. And then we spent a bit of time talking about preservation and operation and maintenance, and Chris had done a really nice chart for us explaining what goes into operation and maintenance and their need for new equipment that will help with the crack seal. And then we talked about, we just went through programming out projects that we need to do, and the committee members, which are Councilmember Rosa Pepe and Councilmember Deener and myself, our conclusion was because we've only been, this committee has been in existence for a year, and at the start of the year, we didn't meet a lot because of COVID, and we're relying a great deal on the staff and the transportation experts to be able to know what design work we need to do to be prepared for grant applications and some other things. And I, I believe we will get something more detailed for the full council tomorrow at our budget, our budget discussions, because we really focused on deploying money and bringing, you know, working with preservation needs over the next couple of years, as well as keeping our capital projects moving forward. But we, we didn't finish that meeting until just about 6:30 in time to come to this one, so I honestly haven't digested it a lot to be able to give you a thorough report, but we'll try to do that tomorrow.
I think it's one of the, my biggest takeaways there, you know, the Tremont was such a huge lift, and it tickled virtually all of our transportation dollars for a period of time, and now we're recovering from that, and between the 976 decision and, and some other dollars that my budget and what the Finance Committee recommended, it's a little over nine, it's like $930,000 that will be, is being proposed tomorrow to, for street preservation and maintenance, and that's a, that's a big step in the right direction, so. Not everything, still everything we should be doing, but it's a big step in the right direction. All right, next is Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Do you have some recommendations for us, Jay?
I do. I actually have a report after the 52, 51 weeks, when I say we'll meet in October. First of all, I'd like to give a lot of kudos to Brandy for organizing this and making it come off without a hitch, since it's like curding cats. The council had authorized a budget, a target budget of $100,000. Six requests come in that totaled approximately $69,000. The committee was very conservative. The committee consisted of Corinne Haddock, Lorraine Olson, and Sharon King. Unfortunately, our representative from Red Lion was not able to make it. They were very conservative. They wanted to focus on the tourism and marketing aspects, and right now not be, take a look at event-driven, so they reduced some of the requests, and they have a proposal of 52,500 going into next year with wanting to meet again in February to see what the outcome of some of the restrictions that may be lifted. We have, you know, we have some good news to see if they would like to allocate some additional funds. They understand that, that the money will not be going elsewhere. They understand that money was not spent this year, but they still remained very conservative. It was the total time, presentations were yesterday, and we had presentations from Fathom, Sydney Museum, Kitsap, two from the Chamber, one from POPSa. So in a nutshell, it was very good. People want to see what's going to happen, and then we'll probably meet again in February and come back to the council if there's any recommended changes.
Back.
Yeah, did I hear you say visit Kitsap? Did visit Kitsap not apply? Or did I not hear?
I'm sorry?
Visit Kitsap? Did they apply? I didn't hear you say visit.
Yes, yes, it was visit.
They did, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, good meeting, thank you.
All right, look forward to seeing the recommendations. It's almost Christmas, Cindy. What do you have to tell us?
So today, Bill and I went out and looked at the tree that is being considered, and we decided that that will be the tree. It's a beautiful tree, kind of round-shaped, but it's going to be lovely out in front, and it'll probably be out there about November 16th. So everything is moving forward. The lights will go up downtown, probably the first to second week, because Public Works is going to be doing that in conjunction with getting the trees planted. We have sold about 30 to 35 trees thus far, so we're still looking for sponsors. We have sold about 30 to 35 trees thus far. So we're still looking for sponsors for the rest of our trees. Things are going well. I mean, as well as they can for an event that is mostly lights and rocks. So anyway, ho, ho, ho.
All right. Thank you, Cindy. All right. As we've mentioned earlier, the directors and councils, department directors and councils budget meetings are tomorrow all day long here on Zoom, starting at 8:30 tomorrow morning. So I'm looking forward to seeing most of you there tomorrow and.
Who's bringing the donuts?
You're responsible for your own donut. Limit one.
I was wondering if you're going to get DoorDash from Puerto Rico.
Thinking outside the box. Right. All right. Outside agencies. Beck, do you have anything to report?
Uh, just that the Peninsula RPTO is starting tomorrow evening is our first legislative meeting. We're holding three special meetings. Tomorrow night is the 24th legislative district. John, are you going to attend that?
Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able tomorrow, but I've got the rest of them on my calendar.
Okay. And then on November 5th, we're meeting, combine the 23rd and 26th together. And that's only scheduled for a half hour and then that'll be followed directly with meeting with the 35th legislators. KRCC is working on updating our countywide planning policies. And that is moving forward. The consultant's been hired. They've met with the LUTAC committee. They will be meeting with the full board in December. And I believe, well, maybe not, but they're going to be meeting with both transportation that trans, Trans-TAC and Trans-PAL in November and I believe Plan-PAL in November. So that's the big work item that KRCC is doing right now is the countywide planning policies. So that's what I have.
Okay. And I just had a little bit of news to share with, as it relates to COVID and the Department of Emergency Management. And so one of our choke points here in Kitsap County to get to phase three is our, is our testing capacity as it relates to the number of active cases we have. And so obviously active cases is part of the challenge we have and we're not meeting those thresholds. But we do have a mobile test or excuse me, a test facility that anybody can drive, drive through over in Bremerton that opened yesterday. And the goal and the capacity of this facility is to test 80 people a day. And yesterday, on the first day, they tested 78 people.
Whoa.
Glad we have it. Unfortunate that we have to use it to that extent, but there is a place for people to not have to go see their medical provider. Get a referral to go have that testing. They can just go have, get a test done. So glad we have that now. I sent a couple of documents to you today. Check your email. One is a, the draft legislative priorities that we'll talk, get a presentation from Josh. And potentially adopt on November 24th. And I also sent you a doc, a document to guide our conversation a bit tomorrow. As some items that we identified maybe that we missed in the initial budget process. You know, just reiterate again that on the Bay Street pedestrian pathway, we have re-engaged our right of way agent for the property acquisitions for the pathway. And they're in contact with property owners. Title ports and appraisals have been ordered, are being ordered and property owners should be receiving offers shortly after the first of the year. And then my last item is the community center and the selection committee. And we heard that don't know yet when that's going to be. I'm confident it'll be a meeting during the daytime with our, with our consultant. Steve ideally wants a committee of six or seven. If I add a couple of you guys in, I'll have nine and that's really about as big as we want to get this thing. I'll tell you who I have so far. John Morrissey, our, our public facilities district rep. I've confirmed that Gary Anderson, who's a port commissioner and a commercial real estate broker, has a ton of knowledge in commercial real estate. Doesn't, isn't conflicted. I had to ask that question to make sure he didn't have any active listings on properties that we're talking about and he doesn't. He has two listings. What were they? They're down the street farther. One was Dick Peterson's building that Coffee Oasis is in. And the second, oh, and the movie theater is the other listing he has. And those aren't properties that we're, we're talking about at all. Tim Winters, our superintendent of the school district. Jill Jean, the executive director from the library, Nick Bond, myself. And then a representative from the Kitsap Transit, which will likely be Stephanie Lilly. And so I saw Scott whip his hand up quickly in, in that discussion and I, and I see Jay raising his hand. Is anybody else that would like to even be an alternate? Would you, Cindy?
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
Doesn't the council make the final decision on the site?
Yes, we will.
Would it be a conflict to have us in this process and then turn around and make the decision? Not that it's a, I don't know. I, it's just a question that I was kind of thinking about during, or since Dave's presentation of whether or not we should have council involved in this part of it.
Charlie, what are your thoughts there? I hadn't, I didn't.
Conflict, but I'm happy to look at it. I, I mean, this is an advisory body that would make a recommendation. I don't think it's, I don't, a conflict doesn't pop up for me, but I'm happy to look at it.
It's an advisory board that's advising the final decision makers as well. So.
Absolutely. Yeah. But I've had similar situations where council have participated in the advisory board in other contexts. I don't think it necessarily undermines the ultimate decision, but I'm happy to look at it closer and make sure.
I guess it's no different than our participating in the parks plan development and in adopting the parks plan. So maybe I'm just overly sensitive.
So I saw Jay and Scott raise their hand to participate and Cindy is an, you want to be an alternate? Is that, okay? And yeah, obviously we're going to confirm that we don't have any conflicts. And, and I'll get the date as soon as possible. We have another meeting, steering committee meeting Friday. So hopefully I can get back to you Friday afternoon or first part of next week at the latest on, on potential dates. So I know it'll involve a bunch of calendars. So. Okay. With that, that concludes my report. And where are we? Department heads? Let's start with the attorney. We always with her last. Charlie?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. The moratorium on utility shut offs proclamation, just to give you an update on proclamations has been extended through the end of the year and the proclamation related to the OPM and PRA has been extended to November 9th. But we're extending, we're expecting a further extension of that proclamation.
Okay. Oh, where are we here, people? The Chief Brown?
Uh, thank you. Actually, we've had a fairly interesting last few weeks. As everybody knew, we had that big windstorm last week and I just want to let council know that your marine services team did a really, really good job at about six to eight foot waves. We had four boats break anchor and start drifting into ferry lanes and we were able to get out, respond and pull those boats out of the ferry lanes without any interruption to transit. So it has helped us recognize a need for not just training on nice days, but we were able to, like I said, I figured Councilmember McClosson, you would be happy to know that we kept the ferries going.
Well, I, this is the first I heard of it, so I just wanted to pass on my thanks. So thank you.
Of course, sir. On that, we're going well.
And, and how's your, your strategic advisory committee going?
I know. Actually really, really well. We've had two meetings so far, like we've discussed before. Steve Strand from WASPIC has been our facilitator. I will have one more meeting next week and after I have their recommendations, when I'm going to hopefully meet with everybody from council individually. And I've been working with our department directors to kind of get their perspectives and talking with fire and the rest of our regional law enforcement partners on what they're looking for out of us as well. And then that'll culminate into a, a report of those recommendations that will bring out to staff and to you as well.
Thanks for your report. Noah, what do you, what do you know today? We're almost done with the budget.
I see, I see it ending site in a month and a half. So almost there. Nothing much. We got, we'll be talking again tomorrow. So I got nothing to report.
Okay. And Debbie, you're here. You want to, you have anything to share with the council?
Um, I am working on my Laserfish implementation documents. So excited to start that process. It's very involved upfront as you would expect. But the backend of it will be great. So that's all I have.
Maybe Brandy can, in her report can talk about that public portal we're, we're working on. So so it's your turn, it's your turn, Brandy. Tottenya softball there.
All right. So it's my turn. So yeah, so we're just, I think Janine's dumped probably a couple more hundred, if not close to about 500 documents into the Laserfish portal. We'll be publishing the mayor's newsletters, the last six years. Four to six years, I should say, all of our press releases, public notices. There's a couple of other things that will be putting in there as well for the public. Met with the Laserfish team this morning to confirm that everything on the public portal is in place. I have one more meeting with them hopefully next week sometime to get everything finalized so we can get even more documents in there and into the right files. So the public can see those. Looking on.
It should be a huge lift when we get there to allow the public just to access the documents themselves versus making a public records request and staff time involved and preparing and issuing those documents to, to the public. So.
Absolutely.
Big lift and, and make it happen, but it'll be worth it when it's done. Mr. Bond, what's happening in the development world?
Oh, we are busy. First of all, our, our building inspector, who's been with the city for quite a while is retiring and we're working on a transition plan. We currently have a long enough backlog of plan reviews that he's going to complete the plan reviews that we have in our hands now. And anything that comes in between now and the end of the year is going to go to our consultant to make sure that if there's any gap between getting somebody on board to replace him and his retirement, that we are not falling behind or, or starting in a major hole at the beginning of the year. So things are going smoothly there. We have, I think Councilmember Chang mentioned the report from economic development, but we're actually, we're at 108 houses. New single family residences permitted this year and that passes last year, which was 97. So we're a little ahead of that pace and I would expect probably a dozen more permits to issue this year. So well above what we budgeted and what we projected and also a, a record in terms of the number of single family homes in the last decade. In addition, there's 136 unit apartment complex. We issued permits for all of the buildings in the last month. And so I believe the mayor forwarded an invite to you for a groundbreaking ceremony. I think it's on Thursday. And if you're planning on attending that, make sure you let Brandy know in case she needs to notice that. And just a note about that project, it's the valuation of the project is $20 million. And so it's a huge sales tax generator with all of the construction materials being delivered to that site. They paid a substantial traffic impact fee, parks impact fee. Their permit fees are considerable in terms of paying for all the inspections and plan reviews that are required on that project. So it's, it's a massive project and one of the biggest we've had in, in quite a few years. So that's an exciting project. And as I've mentioned in some of the other reports, that's one of five apartment complexes that are in for review right now. And so that's just the first one of those and it's going to keep us busy. So when Noah was talking about sales tax revenue forecasts, I think that this, this project is probably a little bit of a bump on sales tax beyond what we see year over year. So hopefully your, your numbers are safe. And that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. That's it for Mark. Didn't have a report and had another commitment he had to step out for. So we are to our second citizen comment period. Is anyone wishing to address the council? Don't. I, we will adjourn our meeting and after Brandy stops the recording, Nick, can I call you? Or do you, you want to hang out for just a minute after we adjourn the meeting, which, which you prefer?
I can hang out.
Okay. I got a question for you.
The host.
Brandy is.
Goodbye. You the host.
Here, I'll make you host.
Why don't we jump off here so that Brandy, because she's got to copy this. I'll just call you, Nick.
And Cindy is waving her hand.
Oh yes, Cindy. Something for the good of the order? Thank you. Yes. It's my birthday today.
Happy birthday. You kept it all day.
Wow, that's a shocker.
Happy birthday. What are you, 18 now, Rob?
Yeah, 25 again, I think. Times a couple.
Should we sing? Do you want to be sung to?
So my wife got me this tracker on my wrist. She says it's a Fitbit. I think she's just trying to.
The GPS tracker.
That's what I suspected. Yeah. So I've got such an exciting life. It's here at city hall and my house, city hall and my house. So.
You can get up to the courthouse and vote.
I've done that. I done, I took care of that. So yes. I, so, all right. Thank you all. And I'll talk to you in just a second, Nick.
Thank you all. Bye.